Sorry for the delay. Please rise for more than silence and speak to the flag.
During our moment of silence, if you can remember our student that passed away from in Berwick School District last week.
The diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have anything for athletics tonight?
I do not have anything.
All right, I have a question for athletics. When are we going to have a visitation for flash years, please note the PSSAs?
So do you have an academic affairs committee meeting in the very near future? We're just getting a schedule that will happen there first, and then we'll come through the next four meetings.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Athletics?
Don't have much today. We're just working on the athletic.
Christina, do you have any thoughts for budget?
I do. We have received a study or designation from Benefit Wallet, who currently they manage our MSA and our kind of care and administration accounts. We vetted four different companies, and we found one that we would like to go to. It's called Health Equity. There is a change, a small change in price because there's a charge for participants a month. Probably be ways to about an extra three hundred dollars.
Buildings and grounds.
Yes, good evening. Now you have my report, and Mrs. Kumski and I talked about a few things, but we had that. We had been investigating a little bit of some electrical issues at a few of the schools, and we're looking into that. We're thinking some of it could be from a lot of personal things that are coming in that are being used, maybe, you know, different coffee pots, that kind of stuff and whatnot. So as a matter of fact, just when I got here tonight, there was a few maintenance requests for trip breakers and that kind of stuff. So we're slowly kind of looking into it, and then we were going to bring back a report to buildings and grounds and kind of start that.
Thank you.
Yeah. As we go, you guys went to your presentation for us. Do you have a, or are you just doing hard copy?
We're just going to do, we have the hard copy of the final draft of the study, and then the power point is loaded. Let's correct this.
I'm going to do the presentation. Yes?
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight to do a midpoint recorder point overview of the results of our facility assessment and study. We do produce great facility results. I had no idea we would garner this great of a crowd to look at our facilities' testing results. Thank you for all attending. That's wonderful. What I passed out is the final draft, the overview of the deficiencies and some informational data. It's specifically bound in the fashion that it is so that you can separate it into parts when you meet with among your board committees and your facility committee to discuss the deficiencies and give back to us with the rankings that you see fit for the areas. We rank them from our vision, but you need to rank them from your vision, and then we'll help you craft or not craft the action plans associated with the deficiencies or the improvements that could be made to the facilities of the world carries school district.
All right.
Couple things on the agenda that we'll be covering, not in any necessarily order, but we have about eighteen, nineteen slides, and we should be able to get through these pretty quickly. What we did just as a recap, we assessed all the buildings. You can kind of see listed there. We also observed the student drop off and pickup. We actually did that within the last couple of weeks because we really wanted to understand with the new elementary school being closed and everything being consolidated to make sure we had the most current data and information regarding the vehicle or traffic, excuse me, and the like there. We also have general site observations, did a detailed walkthrough and photos of the majority of the spaces. We noted areas of potential improvement, got an understanding of the use of each space, and we developed a detailed list of improvements. As we go through here, if you see anything in gray, it means it's been completed. Anything in blue is good, which means in progress, and anything in red, it hasn't been completed or started yet. So on the right here, you'll see in your information packet, this is kind of a snapshot of the detail we get into with different deficiencies within your, on your campus. This in particular is the high school, and we took a snapshot of the interior building evaluation. You'll see. You'll see over here, kind of outlined in red, we assign a cost for each of the deficiencies, and we also rank it from one to four. One meeting, kind of hair on fire, we got to get this done because if we don't get it done, it's going to cost even more because it's going to affect other systems. I might shut down, say, a portion of the school. We got to get this done ASAP. And four being, hey, if we get to it, we get to it. That's more kind of a wish list type dynamic, and then we have everything in between. The rankings are ebb and flow. As Bronson mentioned, we do take our first stab on this based on our experience, what we've seen at other facilities, but it doesn't mean you can't take a rank one, move to rank two or three, or vice versa, depending on the importance or the necessity for your facility. So don't think they're kind of locked in stone here. We kind of adjust them around again, and you'll see later on the summary sheet how we can make some adjustments on there.
And in the final draft, the final product, the final draft, excuse me, there'll be a five-year escalation, so you can see what something caused today, which is listed as in today's study versus postponing it or delaying it for a second year, a third year, a fourth year, or a fifth year. So we'll be able to show you the inflationary impact on those numbers based upon current rates.
Keep in mind, too, the costs. We always err on the side of caution in terms of going a little bit high, understanding that the district can do it themselves and save some money or find a better deal, but we also don't want to be in a situation where we're saying, hey, something costs $10,000 and it comes back and costs $20,000 or $30,000. We look at this as one big bucket of money and where you might save something in, say, on the right side, it might cost a little more on the left side, but you're coming in under the overall number. That is the goal here. We don't want to have to go back and up the number. We'd rather come down from it. And again, these are for budgetary and planning purposes. So as you can see, I know it's a little bit small, but you can kind of see, this is a district-wide synopsis of all the buildings within your district. We have this individual sheet for each individual building, but we want to show you kind of the summary of where we're at overall with our deficiencies and the costs and whatnot. Typically, what we look at is the cost per square foot. Traditionally, what we've seen in all of our feasibility studies, if we're about $90 a square foot and above with the deficiencies, that means you have a little bit of work to do. We've seen some districts that size, $175 to $200 per square foot. They got some issues going on. Usually that's major HVAC issues and, you know, some other electrical issues that kind of really drive that number up pretty high. Anything 90 and below means you're relatively maintaining good care of your facility. Doesn't mean you don't have things to work through or hair on fire dynamics, but it means you're in a better spot than, you know, average. And again, $90 a square foot is roughly kind of the average mark that we see, you know, throughout our feasibility studies. And I believe for where you guys are, I can see that, around $56, $58 a square foot. Here, the categories we evaluate are site, exterior of the building, interior of the building, HVAC, plumbing, and electrical. And we have the cost, the total deficiency cost for all the facilities on your district. And we also get into safety and security evaluation, along with any code evaluation, and then anything maybe miscellaneous upgrades. But for intensive purposes for this study, we didn't put any in there for any miscellaneous upgrades.
And then this sheet, along with every sheet that's in this packet, is in the larger packet that you have in your business.
So for your district currently, we've identified about $34 million worth of deficiencies, which equate to about $65 per square foot. That doesn't mean you're going to go out tomorrow and spend $34 million, so don't be alarmed by that number. Again, it's just for planning purposes. We take that $34 million, and then we rank these from one to four, as I had mentioned previously, and we start identifying, okay, what are we going to have to tackle first, second, and third, based on the rankings? We're still in the process of sorting that out. We do need some feedback, or we'll be sitting down with the district and kind of talking with you guys a little bit about that, but we see the biggest kind of adjustments being kind of in the rankings right now, where we're going to be in terms of cost with certain items and what's important to the district. We also listed down here by each individual building, the total construction cost for the deficiencies. Again, totaling $34 million, but you can see what each individual building ranks in terms of deficiencies. We have the construction cost, which is just that, the pure construction cost to remediate said deficiencies. If you look at the total project cost, that also incorporates all the soft costs that you would take to kind of go out and, say, bid it out, design fees, professional fees, any permitting, all that type of dynamic. So that's kind of more of an all-in cost. We typically use a multiplication factor of about 1.3 to determine that. That's what we kind of see in average. We have seen it down as low as like 1.25, but again, for this purpose, we start at 1.3, and we'll adjust it based on where we feel comfortable at. Any questions so far?
So each of these slides is going to represent a different school in the district, and the patterns on the right, we recently began to evaluate them and analyze them, and they're a big part of the study. You know, traffic patterns at school district campuses since COVID have been very unique when it comes to drop off and pickup. You know, the last three years of my superintendency, it's just when a community, I saw our parent pickup and drop off go from a minuscule amount to a massive amount, causing great concern, a lot of stress at the end of the school day and at the beginning, and absolutely nowhere apart, safety concerns galore. So in addition to what is on the left side, the deficiencies by category, on the right side, you have some traffic elements that your report will get into and that we'll get into.
You know, on the left, we started, we picked out the top three that we saw per category on there. We also put the call-out number, for instance, like the A2, which corresponds with the, what's in the feasibility, excuse me, facility study draft here, so you can easily reference it back and forth. And we go through each one of those. They're pretty much self-explanatory. There is a couple on here, for instance, plumbing. All the plumbing was in good shape based on our analysis, so we have an NA there. So there wasn't anything for, at least, East Burwick Elementary School in the district administration office, there wasn't any deficiencies that we identified for that. And you can see also for safety and security down here, typically, we have emergency generator, which is being recommended to provide the building with an emergency generator. Also upgrades to the fire alarm system, and then there's also replacing the PA clock system within the facility. Again, the same thing with Westburg Elementary School. We have the traffic patterns. Anything circled here with a dash red line means they were kind of points of contention that were observed during drop off and pickup. I'm sure you guys know your pinch points better than we do, but those are what we observed with our team in the last couple of weeks. And again, for safety and security for West Burwick, one of the items here is the new interior indoor hardware for the intruder lot function. That was one of the things that was identified, and it's all focused on safety and security, the different items and deficiencies within that category. All right, here we have the, this slide is just for the middle school and high school regarding the traffic patterns and deficiencies. We put a few highlights here of what was observed. As we mentioned, through this process, the parents that go to high school and the middle school lots kind of cut through the parking lot spaces and shorten arrival and exit times, which could potentially cause some issues. Cars end up parking in the middle school lot, especially when arriving early, and this creates issues with the parked cars trying to pull out into long exit lines or not being able to kind of pull out and kind of causing traffic jams. Another issue they identify where cars do not pull, do not pull up to the proper spots as to where the students are to be dropped off, and they recommend that this might have something to do with signage or, you know, maybe parents just not wanting to do it, but they have identified it.
It is concern all over.
Yeah, we run this all the time.
We've seen such a massive growth in drop off and pickup, such code, and that district has pretty much, so managing the traffic flow and, you know, there's procedural, and then there's also limitation of designated areas procedural, and there are districts that say, okay, if you're going to drop off, it's this time and not this time. It has to be rigorously enforced, but the problem is, if it's not rigorously enforced, it goes back to what has been on a daily basis, so it's about keeping up with any policies or procedures. But then there's also, you know, designated drop off areas that are instructed to help with the problem, you know, based upon the acreage available and the land available to do so.
This is pretty, this is pretty common throughout all the deficiencies regarding the traffic patterns. We have a little legend up here, so we break it down between bus, van, parents, and a combined circulation, along with pedestrian circulation. And again, the circle dash red lines are the kind of point of conflict, and then we have like a narrative with each location here, which we won't get into all that detail for this evening, but it gives you a lot of good information of, okay, you know our problems, and you probably already know what the issues are, but next step is how do we fix them? The next two slides, one's from the middle school. Again, it's just kind of focusing on the top three in each category of the deficiencies. For the middle school, the HVAC was, you know, in very good shape, and we didn't have any deficiencies for that, and there were some minimal deficiencies in the plumbing evaluation category. And same thing for the high school, a little bit more detailed, the top, top items underneath each category. And we also did an Escapec Elementary School while we're up here. We understand it's not currently in use, but depending on where that goes, you have the deficiencies to kind of understand, you know, what you're dealing with kind of moving forward. We understand there's a lot of different dynamics going on. We also got a little bit into the demographics, which is the historical and current enrollment. We just wanted to show you real quick, kind of your high and low points, went back 20 years, and you can see kind of the high point enrollment for K through 12 is just a little bit over 3,300 students. Fast forward to today, you've been pretty steady the last four years of about 2,600, maybe a little bit above or right around that number with students. And we always tend to look at your current kindergarten enrollment, too, to see where that's at, because that a lot of times drives, you know, enrollment for future years. Also broke it down with K through four, what your high point was there, which is about 1,225, and currently, you know, this year was 1027. And then also five through eight, your high point was 1168, and we're down to 879 currently. Again, that's been roughly staying steady since, since the COVID years. And here's the capacity that we typically compare. We go into a lot more detail with this, but we just want to kind of show you this high altitude is, these numbers match up, this 2627 matches up with the overall K through 12 enrollment, but we break it down per grade level here. We only had two buildings for elementary here, so we didn't total them individually, but we have the individual enrollment for each of the grade levels here. And then we looked at the district functional capacity. So the actual enrollment is 2627. The district functional capacity is 32 of three, and then PDE, which is traditionally higher, is 3959. We're still waiting for the current PDE numbers to come out for 2022, 2023, so we can kind of update this, but we just want to kind of show you where you're currently at, you know, based on our research and what we've, what we've been looking at.
So all of your classrooms and your instructional spaces, with today's current enrollment, fall within the PDE guidelines for capacity. However, that does not mean things haven't changed in public education and the education in the school district in terms of utilization of additional, for additional services that are being provided to our, to your students. Students receive more auxiliary outside and internal services in public schools than ever before. So while that may meet the PDE capacity limits, and you might be under the PDE capacity limits, that does not mean you don't need more space or that you don't need to look at how you can make the best utilization of space that you do have, because we have so much more in public education today within a school building than it was before.
And you never want to be a one-to-one with the capacity, because that means you're kind of busting out of the seams and you have no flexibility. We typically find the sweet spot being around, you know, 0.8, 0.9, especially with special education now. We're finding a lot of districts, either enrollment's kind of staying steady or dropping, but there's a need for additional space because they have to hire additional teachers, you need breakout spaces. There's a lot of different dynamics with special education causing for additional space within a facility. So again, you never want this number to be kind of one-to-one. You want that sweet spot to be around 0.8 to 0.9. That's what we typically recommend, with 0.9 being on the high side. And we also just quickly looked at your, your current program. We listed each of these spaces within your buildings and identified the number of classrooms, the square footage, and the capacity typically, and we did it for both the elementary schools and also five through eight and nine through 12. Typically, as a next step with our feasibility studies, we would get into analyzing proposed options based on your educational needs, but for where we're at currently, what we're kind of instructed to do, we're kind of just focusing on the facility and looking at that dynamic currently. So again, our traditional feasibility study, our focus has been up here with the facilities, but we can also kind of do a deeper dive with demographics and also your educational program. They all kind of weave in and out of each other, and they're all interconnected, but at the end of the day, the results are, you know, complete evaluation. We look for return on investments, identifying priorities, even grant opportunities. A few kind of came and went here recently, earlier in the year, and, you know, look at overall total project cost. So in terms of next steps.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start down at the bottom, and actually, that should read Westburg and not Eastburg, but I did have the opportunity to visit Westburg Elementary School just from an adminis, former administrative perspective to see how may space be utilized a little bit differently. I've shared the findings with the superintendent, and, you know, there's options within buildings to find space. Sometimes it does involve, you know, moving things around and adjusting a little bit of the procedural culture of a faculty and staff, but definitely opportunities to find some spaces. You know, Westburg was designed with some very, very large classrooms, classrooms that are actually large enough to hold many more students than what an admin, former administrator or a current administrator would want in a classroom. You know, it's, you can't go hindsight, you know, very few districts realize they're going to lose 25 to 33% of their enrollment over a 20-year period across the state between 2005 and 2024, but, you know, that's really where things went. But there, there are some options, you know. There's a lot of areas within that building where you might be able to find some additional office or counseling space if maybe some storage practices were changed a little bit. There's some end-of-the-hall cubicles that could be developed to provide different types of support rooms. There's an opportunity to, to make a head and flow of, you know, photocopying and clerical aspects out in the main area, and there's two areas where actually, if you needed space, it could be utilized within a renovation project to provide some additional classroom space. So, you know, building a new building isn't what this report says in any way, shape, or form is needed. It's making most of the space that you have, giving the educational priorities, the first priorities over the larger spaces, and opportunities for renovation to make sure that, you know, always providing the best learning and teaching environment to the students, and making the best use of currently any utilized space.
I think you can see what the power coded items on here, where we're currently at in progress, and what we haven't currently touched at this point. And that ends our presentation. Any questions, comments?
Can you leave all this to us ahead?
We, we put more paper than tag, though. By the way, good to grow. But they're, they're like that, so you can keep their stuff, so you can take each school and separate them, and, you know, encourage you to take each school one at a time. Prioritize your own, you know, what you feel is a priority, and then in the final room, the final room. And then in the final room, the final report will have your rankings, because your rankings and your knowledge is far superior to ours in terms of the cultural operation of the district's buildings, with code operations, and more of all, of the teachers and the students.
Twice now, if you want to twice, kind of go over the, you know, everything and I'll show you a lot of questions as you do through there and we can make the adjustments necessary. As long as we can justify it, we can, you know, make the adjustments within there, whether it's the cost or the rankings.
Mrs. Post is a witness tonight. She did not have anything to send along for CSI U. For the policy committee, we had a meeting last week. We reviewed four policies. We revised a policy and we have three new policies for tonight. Mr. Haskin, anything for the tech?
Just a little update, there's, you know, we had our lawyer standard meeting last month. Biggest item on the agenda was Jim Becker, our public superintendent, who became our new superintendent director for the next two years. That's a two-year rotating position in the superintendent of the city. Everyone's talking about you, whatever. Right now, we had, still have discussions about the uh the floor repair and the field house. It's probably looking at the roof, we're probably going to get financing for it. And at this point, I don't have major information, so hope you're not worried for that, and
Any questions for Pete? Brings us to the end of the committee of the whole. And we can move right into the regular meeting. First item will be approval of August 19th, coordinating minutes. Anybody have any questions on that? We get a motion to approve? Second? All in favor? I oppose. I have it. Next, we have a presentation of the monthly bills. Anybody have any questions on the bills? Can we get a motion to approve the bills? Second?
Yes, with the exception of Sweet Stevens, no. You can't.
Yes.
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 Yes, no Sweet Stevens.
Yes.
August 27th, Burwick Area School District roughly welcomed 2,600 students into our district. As we wrapped up our second week of school year, I just wanted to take a moment to share our excitement about the year ahead of us and to express our appreciation of your continued support. The start of the school year is always a time of transition and adjustment. This year is no exception. It's been wonderful to see how our students are stepping up into the roles with enthusiasm and determination. They're navigating their new schedules, they're seeing new faces, they're reconnecting with their other people, with their peers from, from last year. Our students have shown great resilience and adaptability. Here's some reminders I'd like to give to the families. An academic focus, as your students settle into the classes, please encourage them to stay organized and engaged with their studies. Our teachers are here to support them and open communication between students, parents, and teachers is key for their success. We have extracurricular activities. Time outside of the school day is a great time for students to explore new interests and develop their talents. Our teachers are here to support them, our coaches, our, our coaches and our club advisors are here to support them in clubs, sports, and activities. I encourage all students to get involved and take advantage of these types of opportunities. Communication, we value the partnership between home and school. If you have any questions or concerns, or if your child needs additional support, please reach out to their teachers or any school administrators or counselors. We're here to help and support you. We communicate on Facebook, uh it's on phone calls, emails, and our website and social media accordingly. Upcoming events, please stay tuned for information about upcoming events such as parent teacher conferences, uh school assemblies, and special programs when early disposses. These events are a great way to stay connected and involved in your child's experience. Website, our district website is transitioning to a new look. Please be patient while we bring it up so that it's fully online and can provide district information. Health and safety, the health and well-being of our students is our top priority. Please remind your students the importance of maintaining good hygiene and, and health practices. Supports are available for mental health and other challenges that your child may be experiencing. Again, thank you for your support and entrusting our students and their education. We're committed to providing a challenging and supportive environment where every student can thrive.
All right, that brings us to uh public comment. Three minutes, this is the agenda items only, and I think I'm aiming township for.
Travis Culver, Salem Township. I'd like to address the policies being put up for first readings tonight. I would like all of you on the board to take time to actually read through each of the policies before voting on them. While reading them, think, do we need, even need a new policy like this? What is the intended purpose of this policy? Is the purpose of this policy to make sure all the kids are included, or is it to make sure certain kids are excluded? Could this policy be used to alienate or discriminate against a certain group of kids or staff? I know policies are boring and usually confusing to read, but policies are the most impactful thing you all have control over, and they affect every student, teacher, and parent. So please, read them thoroughly and have empathy for all our kids, staff, and the wider community before voting on them. Your vote to approve or disapprove a policy may be the ma- may be a matter of a child being accepted and feeling safe and seen, or that same child feeling alone, unsafe, and contemplating if they belong in this world at all. Thank you for your time.
Christina Bertschel Culver, Salem Township. So I am sure some of you are wondering what policies we are concerned about. Looking at the names of the policies on the agenda, they seem pretty innocuous and not cause for concern. Well, in fact, there are actually three, all of which are not unique to Berwick and are being proposed in districts around the state and the country. As an alumni, a resident, a taxpayer, a mom, and a fierce advocate for the LGBTQIA+ community, these policies will bring harm to our most vulnerable students and put our district in legal jeopardy. Policy 807.1, display of flags. This policy was just posted last night, but I already knew verbatim what was in it, because it is the same policy that is being proposed in other districts, like the ones that have been taken to the court by the ACLU. Yes, it appears just to be a policy that makes sure the American flag and PA state flag are waved in our buildings, but we already do that. The real purpose is to stop other flags from being flown, specifically the pride flag. Because like I predicted almost a year ago, some would be coming for the symbols that make our LGBTQ kids feel included, safe, and protected. I was assured at that time, at that meeting, that Berwick was an inclusive school, so I am hoping that is actually true and you don't pass a completely unnecessary bill that will tell our queer kids that they are not supported by their district. Policy 824, maintaining professional boundaries. Listen, a lot of this policy I have no problem with. Outlining that adults in the school shouldn't be grooming, children for abuse, molesting children, amen. But there is a paragraph in this policy which is a potential problem, not only to our queer kids, but to many others as well, and has caused issues in other districts. It states in the section that deals with social interaction between teachers and kids, that it would not allow a child to talk privately with a trusted teacher about anything other than schoolwork or sports. This means that children potentially are losing the only safe person that they trust to talk about abuse at home, mental health issues, and of course, the thing that I am worried is at the root of passing this policy, preventing a child from coming out to their teacher. Again, who could be the only per safe person in their lives? Taking this person away could be the matter of life or death to a child. Policy 123.3, interscholastic athletics, sex-based distinctions. Running out of time, and I already explained to the board when this was proposed the last time, that is extremely problematic. I am fully aware that it states its purpose is to ensure compliance with Title IX, but it does the complete opposite. It specifically targets our trans and gender nonconforming kids, which means our district is not complying with Title IX nor the PA Human Relations Act. So like I said last time, do not move forward, because we will face lawsuits. We do not need this policy, it is damaging to our trans kids, and it will get the district sued. I don't know about you, but I don't want to see uh my taxes raised due to completely unnecessary policies that serve no real purpose and will cause harm in the lives of our most vulnerable kids. So please, I am begging you, please do not move forward with these policies, especially if you haven't read them and haven't researched their impact. And let's maybe be that inclusive school dri- district I was assured we are.
I wrote down some notes, I usually don't, but I'll go again. My name's Ben Herring. I'm with the Citizens Advisory of Pennsylvania. You've probably heard that organization's name here before and disparaged it a few times. I'm a dad, I'm a Marine combat vet, so just like we've seen in a nationwide scale, the name-calling, the smears, all that, I'm used to it, I deal with it every day. Our organization advocates for children and their constitutional right to the pursuit of happiness. That pursuit of happiness does not end until the else's feeling begins. Okay, these kids have constitutional rights just like these. And I want to touch on a few things. There's always this, this tape of lack of empathy, or you don't care about people, or you're hateful, or you're this. Couldn't be further from the truth. But we have to worry about all of these students. You all were put here and elected by the will of the voters. Those voters knew what you stood for and who you are as people before they put you on this board. So you have to think of all of the students. And that doesn't mean that we're putting down or discouraging any other students, but these policies are common sense, and I'll explain why. If you're a federal employee, you don't get to go to your workplace and put up anything you want to advocate for political purpose. There's the Hatch Act that governs that. If you're a state employee, Josh Shapiro just put out recent guidance about it a month ago, you don't get to go to work and put out something that advocates for a thing. If you are a local government employee, like a school teacher or something, the school board should hold that governance over what you can't do. If you open the floodgates to allow for pride flags, which I don't advocate for in school, it doesn't mean I'm against the LGBT community, schools are not the place for that. Next thing you know, you're going to have a second amendment flag hanging up, you're going to have a Trump 2024 flag hanging up, and guess what? If you don't allow that, you just open the floodgates up to viewpoint discrimination. I'll speak more at the end, but I do want to bring up one thing. There's a national injunction, Berwick School District, it's highlighted on this list. I'll pass it out if anyone wants to see it. So the, the claim that you guys are not in compliance with Title IX are not true. There was some parent, I don't know who, that joined Moms for Liberty. Just being a member of that organization makes you a part of this injunction. So this injunction means you are on pre-Joe Biden Title IX regulations. There is an injunction. You look up the case, you free go on. But to say that you're in legal jeopardy right now as we stand here today is not true. And I'll keep talking more at the end.
Anyone else?
Um, I'll go, if that's okay. Good evening, my name is, my name is Emily Scranton. Um, I live in Berwick. I'm a fourth grade teacher at West Berwick, and this is my ninth year in this district. I'm speaking to you tonight not just as a teacher for this district, but also as a parent and a member of this community. I've taken the time to familiarize myself with policy 807.1, and I have to say how incredibly disappointed I am. At face value, the policy may seem harmless. It denotes the appropriate flags to be hung in our classrooms as the American flag, state flags, military flags, sports flags. However, we all know that at its root, this policy is attempting to ban pride flags and symbols of all kinds, along with any other flag that may affirm students' identities. I would like to tell you a little bit about myself. When I was in fourth grade, I realized that I was different from my friends. I wasn't interested in boys the way that my peers were, but I did everything in my power to pretend that I was, to convince myself that I could live my life as a quote "normal heterosexual person." And I was surrounded by only straight role models, it was the 90s after all, and I tried desperately to identify with those straight role models in my life who I loved dearly. Clearly, didn't work. All of the straight people around me could not turn me straight. The lack of representation in my classrooms and in my school could not turn me straight. However, it could do one thing, it could make me hate myself, because I couldn't see myself ever being accepted. Being able to have representation for our students who are questioning their identity is quite literally suicide prevention. Allowing students to feel safe and secure is the least that we can do as trusted adults in their lives. Showing students that at least one adult cares about them or identifies with them makes them feel less alone. One extremely simple way that we can do this is by displaying flags and symbols that signal to our students that we accept who they are. We accept everyone's differences. I cannot begin to tell you what a difference it would have made in my life if I had had one single adult show me that I was in a safe space and that who I am is not wrong. It would have been lifesaving in the darkest of times. So I'm speaking out tonight on behalf of the fourth grade version of myself who deserved better, on behalf of every child who attends Berwick Area Schools, on behalf of every future child who will, will attend our schools. And when you vote, I implore you to think about what there is to gain from this policy being instated. How will our students benefit from this? Many students will feel ostracized, other, others will feel justified to taunt or harass those who are different from them. Shutting people out and shutting people down has never done any good. Welcoming people, making them feel seen, loved, and secure can only benefit our community and our schools. It is my greatest hope that this policy will not be passed and that all students can feel safe to be themselves and safe to learn, because we want to teach them. We cannot act out of fear, we need to move forward with hope, tolerance, and acceptance.
I would just like to point out, my name is Kenny Conklin. I live on Britton Street here in Berwick. I'd just like to point out the fact that uh this is supposed to be an institution of learning and education. It is not a house of social experimentation. That is not the purpose of a school. And I would also like to point out the fact that, the fact that our public schools have become public places of social experimentation is why we saw these last two gentlemen that were speaking up here with the presentation, why enrollment is dropping in our public schools drastically throughout the country. But it's dropping because school choice is coming. Whether people like it or not, it's coming. And there's going to be an opportunity to take your kids and educate them yourself or put them in a charter school that doesn't play into these kind of games and focuses on teaching the kid how to read, write, do arithmetic, work a checkbook, do the things that they're going to need in life, not these nonsense crazy ideals that are just social experimentation. That is not the purpose of this, this institution.
My name is Gianna Hansinger, I'm a mother here in Berwick, Pennsylvania. I just wanted to thank the school board for having the policy and giving us the opportunity to stand up and speak on issues such as this. I just want to thank you for putting the policy out last night, or yeah, Sunday night, as long as we're. I just want to thank you for putting the policy out last night, or yeah, Sunday night, as long as it's going to be. Thank you for your hard work, and thank you for putting it all together, thank you.
My name's Bob Reed, I'm a former mayor of Berwick. I am wholeheartedly behind what this gentleman had said. We can't afford to not believe in the flag as something that encompasses for everyone, not just for the middle. So, I wholeheartedly feel that the board keep the way the policy is going, thank you.
Crystal Mikulowski-Neskepek, this is the first reading of the policies. It's been brought up in previous meetings. When do we get a second reading, or when do these actually get voted on? And that question was never answered, so I'm hoping at some point we can get clarification as to when these policies would be actually voted on, since this is just the first reading of them, thank you.
So the procedure for policy enactment is the first reading gets voted on, and if that passes, the second reading gets voted on, and if that passes, then they become policy. In the last meetings, this 123.3 was tabled, so it never received a vote, so this time that's why it's back for first reading.
Thank you.
My name is Valerie Fink, and I live in Berwick School District. I would just like to say that I am in support of the policies presented, so thank you, Board, for doing your job.
Larry Messina, Neske Burrow. I want to make a comment on policy 903, Public Comment in Board Meetings. Everybody's making a comment here, which is a good thing. You're getting both sides of the story for several of the policies. But obviously, with that policy, you don't want to listen to us anymore. You want to take the public comments out of the meeting. You were elected, okay? You put your name on a ballot, you ran, we voted on you, you were elected. If you don't like what we have to say, there's the door, we would gladly appreciate a resignation as you leave. And that way, we can have comments in a safer, I'll say constructive manner. Thank you. Mr. Messina, can you specify where that changes?
We want to be sure we're not removing the public comment.
Right, 90... 906, you're crossing out... In the first paragraph, you're crossing out the public comment at the beginning of the meeting, which is the session we're having right now.
Now, so the public comment would be made at the appropriate time as outlined in policy 006, that's what it's saying. So as policy 006 changes and dictates when public comment is, you don't always have to come back to the policy and keep saying what it is, you just refer to the other policy.
What if it changes too after the vote?
I'm not sure I follow this question.
But if you decide not to have a public comment at the beginning of the meeting, you're just gonna say we're gonna have it at the end of the meeting, so after you vote on something and nobody wants it...
Policy 006 right now stipulates that we'll have the comment period we're having right now for agenda items, and then at the end of the meeting, we'll have an open comment period, that's the public policy brief right now. Yeah, so we're not taking away any public comment time.
Well, when it came up on my thing, you had crossed out, comment before the meeting.
Okay, well that's...
It does, because you just suggested to remove this, because it's already been stated in a...
Right, I see what you're saying. So the beginning of each meeting is lined out with that statement, but that statement is amended to say that the comment period will be in accordance with policy 006. So nothing's changed when we do comments. Alright. Anyone else?
Oh yes. I'm not getting into which side, I'm not getting into all of it. I'm just saying, and you know, that if you're going to make a policy, I feel you need to look at it and say, number one, is it educational necessary? But more important, are you going to enforce it? You know, the last meeting I brought up one policy that I didn't think you guys were enforcing, and I want to thank that that was addressed in certain areas, and I want to also address that the question was answered about when the second reading is. But what I'm saying is there is one policy in there that I can take my colleagues and send it out to 10 of them, and they're all gonna come back with the same, different answers. None of them are gonna have the same answer. You need to take that policy and decide what you want as puberty. You cannot define puberty in a medical term that everybody's going to agree on. And then you're asking it to go out to the medical people to make that decision. And what is going to happen is if you have a person who is poor, they're gonna be able to go to one doctor and hope they agree with what? They want to be set, what the parent does. But if not, if you have enough money, you can go doctor shopping until you find the answer you want, and then bring it back to you guys and say, here it is. So that policy really cannot be enforced without defining what you people decide is puberty. Again, is it growth of hair, and is it genitalia, is it what? But you need to decide that before you send it out to medical professionals, because each person will give you a different answer. So please, make sure these policies, that you're going to be able to enforce them before you vote on it. And I'm not saying do away with them, I'm not saying vote for or against whatever. I'm just saying, maybe you need to take it back and look at it a little more, thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Karen Knight, Briar Creek Township. I have absolutely nothing prepared, because I just read these policies this afternoon. But as... Sorry. As the mother of a non-binary child who, a couple years ago, was cutting herself and wanted to die. I... I'm not sure she would still be here today if we didn't have teachers who were able to be open in their support of her. And I'm thankful that they were able to show her their support. And I just want you to consider all of our non-conforming kids when you vote on these policies, thank you.
Anyone else? We're gonna move on. So for general items, we have General Item 1, which is eight policies for first reading, and General Item 2 for donations. Do you have any questions for discussion through those items?
I got a couple of questions involving policies. There's some things in here that could be labeled as HIPAA. There are some things in these policies that could be labeled as HIPAA. If we were in this through legal counsel, you ought to make sure we are entitled to receive medical records.
Can we speak up?
Now?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We already asked for a lot of medical records in this school district, they're being volunteered. We're not asking the doctor to give them to us. The student family is giving it to us to confirm a condition, which if we were distributing, might be HIPAA plus receiving and by the management should not be actually that your parent would be part of puberty in 123.18.
Correct, yes.
Everybody seems, I've talked to them, they don't like that line, I'm obviously why you should remove that line from the policy.
Yeah, I, from what the citizen said, that was the line I underlined prior to the meeting, that I don't understand how you define what puberty is, where that comes from, or any violations. I do support the intent of this particular policy. I don't know how you can enroll men towards it though, with that.
And we can... The board wants reasonable accommodations piece policy that doesn't impact any of the rest of the policies.
Well, I did have one other one too, it's the... There are co-ed sports, and there are girls playing men's sports. So is this...
It's a combination in there.
But is it objective or subjective? So I don't know how you...
Once you take out the puberty piece, the rest of it should be objective. The puberty piece was only in there to align with a recent Supreme Court ruling where a student did sue the district because they went through this, the student wanted to play oral sports because of puberty, and the school didn't allow it, and they took it to court. The Fourth Circuit said, if you have to, that is acceptable accommodation that they can play in oral sport because they are not physically attached to playing. So we can remove the reasonable accommodations policy and take the puberty piece out altogether. That's why everybody... That. And that whole section, that whole section is what... So we want to remove that, which one of these? From... From reasonable accommodations, there are a lot of reasonable accommodations down at the bottom. The whole last paragraph versus nothing in this policy, there's a lot of line there in that whole section. And that piece is... And so after the first number two is reasonable accommodations, from there down, it's a bit... It's basically all whole.
So we're able to pull that...
We're able to pull this out, do we have any way we still...
Well, we should point out to the boards that we could see what we're actually doing here.
But, can you open up 123? Thank you, Mr. Hess.
What's up?
I told him that.
So would anybody in favor of taking that policy back, committee, adjusting that? Any other questions?
I have this for policy... 824, Maintaining Professional Boundaries. I'm looking at...
Where are you at?
824, Maintaining Professional Boundaries, I'm looking at... The items...
What page?
Page... Two or six.
Like, what, it's disclosing personal, sexual, family, employment concerns, aircraft matters, one more students. How do we define that? I mean, our faculty and staff like to talk about family matters, like I went to Johnny's baseball game over the weekend, or... And the other one on there is three about giving gifts to students. I mean, there's many teachers that give out the common old Christmas gifts, Valentine's, and stuff like that.
Gifts, it says personal gifts, that would be same right now.
Speak up.
So it's all to get, yeah, it's for the whole class, okay. And I just want to make sure what the family aspect is, because I know people have pictures on the desk, I mean... Make sure we clarify what this exactly means.
I think on 824, I circle in the same section, Keith, this is on page, starting from page two, bottom.
Yeah, I can hear it, same area.
So those first half, I'm 100% on all of those.
You guys have the bottom of the page?
Yeah, on the bottom, starting with number three, giving personal gifts. And then on to the next page, number seven, eight, 13, 14, 16. 13, 14, 16. I thought... My initial thought was we have to be careful in drawing these policies that we aren't pigeonholing teachers into a situation where they can't effectively help students. Drawing from personal experience with myself and my kids. I, again, I grew the spirit of this, especially the first 10, but some of these, I mean, I used to get a ride to school in the back of a pickup truck, and I still talk about it, over 40. I mean, I mean, but... But I think we have to be careful that we're drawing policies for something that isn't there. Um, the one that got me the most, I think, uh, number sixteen. That, I've given a lot of really good teachers, I don't know how we can stop a teacher who genuinely cares about a student from talking to them about something that the student has heard about.
Yes.
And it doesn't have anything to do with gender ideology or, or anything like that. It's just, we've got a lot of issues coming through that we need to make sure that we're not handbuckling our staff. Again, I agree with everything, one for ten, goes without saying, I agree with most of the rest of it, but some of these, I think we need to straighten, think about it a little bit more.
If someone needed a little bit more clarification, it was just about talking about family, what, you know, we probably should define that a little bit better. I mean, someone should be coming in saying they got some bores or stuff like that. I mean, that's what we kept out of school buildings for obvious reasons, whether you want to say, yeah, I went to a baseball game or a football game over the weekend, talk about school. Little interactions like that, I mean, we should definitely.
I think that's context, that session, definitely, context, concerns, private matters. Something like, you know, baseball games, trying to.
Correct, yeah, it's just the wording of it could be interpreted multiple ways.
Yeah, it's the wording, everything is clarified, every word, everything.
Yeah, that is, I mean, that sentence is talking about family concerns and private matters, so I don't, general conversation should not be limited at all. If the comma's there, kind of make it look like it's signaling out family.
Oh, it's this.
Yeah, that's probably what got me, because the way there's comma out there.
I'm assuming this carries over to coaches too. So, so the number, um, number three, carry over to coaching.
They have to involve all adults.
Letters, I mean, that's got something to do with.
All of these, that require, with the kind of, and it's sort of.
In, in most instances, yes, that would make a difference, but in the ones that maybe are mostly pathfinding, they may, they may be seeking out help from the teachers because of.
I agree with this, I'd like to ask you, since you're a good educational, since you're making a lot of. And perfect, well, yeah.
Please use your microphone out of consideration for the hearing impaired.
Six and seven, same thing.
Close P.
Please use your microphone.
I am.
Okay, well, we can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
So it's six and seven.
Thank you.
Are for educational purposes.
Yes, it's six and seven, things I can agree with, um, I think they kind of go in with number six. So even if we added a second teacher, conversation, or staff, I know, volunteer groups, that's how it is, you have one on line, you always, scouts are going to be, always have to accomplish.
Same for coaching.
Same for coaching. I think that makes it better.
So we're going to rework some of the wording on those, the next policy?
I'm not the expert, so it's, I mean, this is hard, this, I think it's, it's emotional, it's hard, it's not an easy decision by anyone.
And some of these can be, from my, can be interpreted multiple ways, because I said, when I first read it, I was interpreting one way, I had to talk to the client, well, I could see the opposite side, so, that's what makes it a little, I could misinterpret it, how many of our people are going to misinterpret it? You put this policy out here, you'll get, three people give you three different answers. I don't like passing any policy that is of type that everyone knows what's expected of.
Is that what we want to do? We want to take this back to committee and rework the wording on some of these?
Well, I mean, you can talk through some of it right now, but for number sixteen, hypothetically, if, if a student seeks out a teacher for help, what's the teacher supposed to do in that situation? Teacher pays them privately, as of right now, privately arguing with another teacher, are they in violation, and then what happens to that teacher?
I think the intent, the intent is that that teacher will find someone who we have hired specifically to address.
I think it's about that. And then, so the counselor, guidance counselor, is permitted to be one-on-one. So that, that would be, policy.
I think that's what that's. That's also a non, right? But, you know, there are, like, and this one, it's, I think so that there is discussion, and if the board, you know, wants to take this back to the committee, I would just recommend that let the committee chair and those committee members know what their concerns are, and what your wishes are, or disagreements are, so he can work that out rather than bringing it back at another meeting, whether it be the next meeting or a month, you know, for now, whatever that is, and then picking on another issue. You know, get it all worked out, you know, your concerns.
If we, if we schedule another policy, we come to have, we sit, even if we're not on committee, we sit. So, as the chair, it's district employees, volunteers, so district employees, wouldn't that mean guidance, we have, on the authority per page. District employees collectively referred to as adults. There. So district employees, guidance, counselors, or district employees collectively referred to adults in this area.
Yeah, but in sixteen, it specifically says guidance and counselors.
Adults who are not guidance, counseling, scouts, psychologists. The way our view of it is, the adults should not be allowed to approach a student asking for that information.
Yeah, that makes more sense. And then.
And then it's saying, if the student initiates it, then they're to refer them to appropriate school resources. It's not saying that teacher, or whoever the student approached can't be involved, it's just saying they need to get somebody to be counseling.
That makes more sense, too. So in this context, we do sixteen A, sixteen B, an outline that we have, we have appropriate school resources, it does say appropriate school resources, unless there's a can.
Yeah, they appropriate school resources would be the guidance counselor, psychologist, social worker, or other adult that is educating or supporting students.
Not due to the teacher involved to determine, you know, it helps to determine which of the resources would be the correct teacher. Very good with that one.
Yeah, the Chris, like, I think, basically saying it's just, it's not your courage that the student just don't come to them, and then they help get them, which is very important. It's more about adults not encouraging, they come to, by non-counselor.
It also says that it's not to interfere with appropriate pre-existing personal relationships that already go on. Yeah, I don't want to see that hiring a student to perform work outside of the school setting.
It doesn't say that. It says, inviting a student to the home. I mean, this is how ridiculous it is. These are common sense things that everybody should know.
These want to.
Look at this common sense. Really? Not even asking. Look at this. The patch, you bet.
Do you think it should say that they should, should paddle on, or exterior, or just not to interior?
Well, COVID says, if they need to exclude all plans. Well, when you're having to take your dash, it's like, you're only going to drive. I mean, this.
So, my point is, you want to exclude that to say, they, they can invite them to the exterior of the house, or not the interior?
I'm just pointing out how ridiculous this is. That's.
Someone, you're just saying, you have to be down to setting all the parameters.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Unfortunately, our society.
Give me a student a ride, non-emergency, without contact with both parents already, and the building. The principal shouldn't have to sit here until five thirty in the night, because the parents aren't answering the phone, working with the kid. He should be able to drive the kid to his house, knock on the door, and say, you got to pick the kid up.
I don't think there's any other policies that allow that.
Well, so you're telling us to take the time for the principal.
I mean, I don't think we have any policies that allow a principal or teacher to do that now.
That's what I'm saying. I know, I do this, me, twice last week, I had to give kids rides home before thirty, parents aren't turning up, knocking on the door, the parent's in the house. That's one of the.
You as a teacher, or you as a security officer?
Uh, I was taught as a teacher.
So a teacher.
People have a lot of.
Very, I'd be very concerned about it as a teacher.
Exactly, but you want to stay until what? You want to stay until six?
I'm saying, I'd be very, very serious. Unfortunately.
Yes.
There you have the specific intentions. Day of the world. Day of the world.
I mean.
We have to have that student say it's.
Can you read that, specific question, a high school question, this is a school ministry. I mean, you can carry part of what, can't use the all common sense, if adults don't know that?
Yeah, but you know how that defense goes. They didn't, they didn't say I couldn't.
I know.
Again, though, if the board wants to change, you know, before they pass the, to vote on, you know, send them back to committee, but attend the meetings, and at least let the committee members know what your thoughts are, so, you know, just don't come to a meeting like this, and then all of a sudden, you know, that's why there are those committee meetings, that's why they're always at the meetings. I realize, not everybody can attend meetings, but email, notify the chairman, notify the committee members, what your concerns are. That's perfect.
So we want to rework some of this stuff? I mean, we, you can turn a six-page document into sixty pages.
Four hundred.
Right. We can do the fine stuff wherever.
Yep.
Hold on.
This has to be a policy.
Right. So, we want, we want to read, we got to.
So on the first reading, if it passes first reading, can we still modify or set the reading?
We can't change it. At the first reading, at the first reading, you can't change anything, and if it would change any of the substance of the policy.
We can pay for the ones we're going to work on and pass the rest. So, figure out which ones we're going to work on.
So we're going to work on 123.1. All right.
Just need time to read it. Dr. Bull, I think you can.
Need time, more time to read, something else right there.
Make sure it's tied together.
Yeah, make sure it's tied. What do you think, Mr. Bull? Change now, have we discussed, or?
I would, I would take it back to committee, and I would encourage all court members to, this chair, correctly, or suggestions, or proposals, you know, attend the meeting if you can, but at least get that information to the committee members, so again, that they are working to accommodate what the, uh, what the court wants.
If you can't be at a meeting, take this into a word, Doc, and just modify, make it recommended changes, once we have everybody's recommended changes, we put them together, Mr. Bull will review them, and try it again. So, 824, we want to change some of the wording on some of those too, then?
Yeah, I think so.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
That would be my personal.
All right, so we need a, we need a motion to table policies, 123.3 and 824. I want to be specific, you know, I want to be, you know, run only six hundred pages.
I'll, I'll make, take back the policy and work on.
All right, so the first and the second.
First table.
Yeah. So the motion to table 123.3, 824, first and, and second. All in favor?
All in.
Opposed? All right, so we're going to work on those in the next policy meeting. So then for the remaining six policies and donations, we get a motion to approve those. Second, all in favor?
All in.
Opposed? Next, we have the approval for the, for the here at school district and school business consultants for pay. for payroll services. And Mr. Bull, he'll be amending that for six months. That's six months.
I think this is, this is true. The wider generation.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve that contract under the condition that determines we use this six months. Second? Roll call, please. No, we didn't suppose it was for this.
Yes. Mr. Natty?
Yes.
Lawyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes. Academic Affairs, we have the approval of purchased textbooks. Do you have any questions for that? Do we get a motion to approve?
Oh, well.
Second? All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Extracurricular items one and two, we have overnight field trip and booster club. Anybody have any questions on those? Do we get a motion to approve? Second? All in favor?
Uh, opposed.
Eyes have it. Transportation, we need approval for higher one, the end driver. Question that's special.
Oh, well.
Second? All in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it. We have thirteen personnel items that we will do with one motion and vote. Anybody have any questions on any of those? Do we get a motion to approve personnel items one through thirteen? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, opposed. Eyes have it.
I, I do oppose, uh, it needs.
They're wrong, that's why. Personnel item fourteen, approve Jesslyn, Jesslyn Hutchinson for gifted education teacher, bachelor step eight, fifty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Do we get a motion to approve that?
Oh, well.
Personnel fourteen. Second? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Lawyer?
Yes.
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 You?
Yes. Personnel item fifteen, approve Shaila K. Haskell, special education teacher, bachelor step four, fifty thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Do we get a motion for that? Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Lawyer?
Yes.
Yes. I thought that was.
Yes. Personnel item sixteen, approve Elizabeth Reinheimer, special education teacher, bachelor step eight, fifty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Do we get a motion for that? Second? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. So now we have, uh, we have, we have another hiring to add to the agenda, and a stipend for a change of position also. We need a motion to amend the agenda to add these items.
So, well.
All in favor of amending the agenda? Opposed? Eyes have it. So the first add, we need a motion to add personnel item seventeen, this will be approval of Antonia Curry to be full-time speech therapist, the employee at Masters plus thirty, step five, fifty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Do we get a motion to add that to the agenda? Second? All in favor? Uh, opposed. So we've added P seventeen. Then we get a motion to add personnel item eighteen, and that is the approval of a stipend for Nancy lawyer in the amount of five thousand dollars to cover high school reassignment. Do we get a motion to add that? Second? All in favor? Uh, opposed. Eyes have it. So now for personnel item seventeen, we need a motion to approve hiring Antonia Curry to be full-time speech therapist at Masters plus thirty, step five, at fifty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Do we get a motion for that? Second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Ferllo?
Yes.
Mr. Natty?
Yes.
Lawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hess, please?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes. Now for personnel item eighteen, we need a motion to approve a stipend for Nancy lawyer in the amount of five thousand dollars to cover the high school reassignment. Do we get a motion for that?
Second? Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Ferllo?
Yes.
Mr. Natty?
Yes.
Lawyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So that brings us to old business. Anyone have any old business?
Um, I'd like to bring up the volunteer handbook that we approved last month. Um, I think there's a lot of them made of a negative kind of description. I think we can remove that possibility now because there are a lot of limitations out there, please, as far as what they can and can't do. Um, they are starting to do a lot of functions with kids right now for the next couple of months, and it's going to influence the volunteer.
That's on the radar for the next policy meeting also, so whatever feedback anybody has for the volunteer handbook should also be.
Some of the workarounds that I gave you about the pictures. Where we would give you a list of the pictures.
Right, but like, we've got like one, two, three, and four, but I only have three things there, so I would go number four there. But then I responded to, but I don't remember those.
Yeah, I know, it's what I was confused about, because I don't under, I thought the workarounds were able to be worked around.
But it's only if, or only if the parents get permission from admin or teachers to take pictures. Correct. So every, like, if there's twenty parents that come into an event, they all have to get their children's from, like, isn't that going to tie up the principal a while to, like, talk to these parents to get permission? You know what I'm saying? Like, they have to go into the office, get permission from the special community, like, is it going to be on an individual basis?
No, 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 no. If, once we get our, so all students have to sign the list if they're, if you're to take their pictures. If you, whoever is the volunteer, we can provide the list of who's not allowed to be in the picture as well, so, I mean, we should see the picture then, so that, you know, if it's there, then we can put a, you know, a slur on a face or something like that.
Well, what I'm saying, if, if parents, like, for example, like, last year in the parent group, like, parents were taking pictures at school events, submitting them to the yearbook, so that the yearbook advisor could put them into the yearbook. So the yearbook advisor knew what it would, get the picture taken, but, I mean, how are we going to limit that? How can we limit that? Because if all these volunteer.
Well, submitting to the yearbook is easy.
Right, but what if, what if say, okay, well, you got this picture taken with Suzie, and I want to put the picture on, because I think it's cute so their mom sees it on Facebook, like, you know what I'm, like, that's where it's going to get.
Fortunately, that is, that's, that's just.
Right, so, but I'm saying, if the admins gives the parent permission to take pictures, then they, they have permission to take pictures, but then, where are we saying, like, okay, but you can't put it on social media, or you can't, like, you can't put it on the ETA Facebook, but it was at school functions, so it was on the ETA Facebook. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, they can, as long as those kids are allowed to have their photograph, as long as they've signed a release.
But it's saying, okay, so as, so.
As long as those, all of those kids in that picture have signed a release, they can be part of your parent.
Even though the handbook says do not take pictures unless you're.
But that was the workaround that I gave.
Okay, so as long as the principal at that school that I'm in says I can take pictures, then I can just do whatever I want, as long as it's not individual.
It's unfortunate, but just like the policies that we're talking about right now, is we do, we actually have a fair amount of kids that, you know, custody battles and things like that.
Right, and I get that, but put a sticker on it, no vote, please. So the, you know, I mean, I mean, we got five hundred and fifty kids over here now that a lot of parents don't know, or, you know, so we don't know who every kid is that if we take a picture and they're not supposed to have their photo taken, I'm supposed to put up that, you know, so is there a way to do that kind of thing?
So this is getting yourselves, whether you're taking pictures for your own personal use, you're taking them off of others'.
Right, but a lot of parent volunteers will submit them for the yearbook, so I think a lot of.
And I think that's what needs to be approved.
That's okay. Yearbook is not a problem. You're going to post it on Facebook or somewhere else.
If you have Facebook or social, your own Facebook, then that, if you're posting on a parent's Twitter Facebook, that's, that's under the office, then I think you need to have the parents accept.
So as long as the parent signs a photo release, then that can be on the Facebook photo group, but if it's a personal Facebook, then the school district.
But not if it's taken out of school function.
So if I take a picture and.
Well, I meant like a, yeah, but that's a public event. I meant like if it's a, if it's like.
It's a school function.
If it's a sponsored Santa book, or Santa shop, you know, that's a sponsored Santa shop, that's only, like, that's not a public event. Football, that's still public. Uh, in the evening, it would be, but not during the day, no. Right. Right.
So then, okay, so if parents are taking pictures during. I said.
I think we're at a point where we, I think we should take this policy.
That's what I'm saying.
It's in place now.
But can we take it out of place so that, like, I mean, is this?
I don't know, we can just take it out of place.
But can we amend the agenda to? Because we also have that T app shop, or TV shop in there too. So, I mean, if we're requiring the parents to get this TV test, and we have events coming up for the kids in the middle of a snowstorm, you have to get the test and then wait three minutes for the results, like, if parents don't know this right now, we're going to be very limited volunteers.
But that policy was approved.
Last round call.
Like, that's the policy.
I've never even known about it, and I've been in the parent division much longer than you have. I've never had a TV test, so we're enforcing this stuff. We have these policies, but they're enforcing it.
Right, right, and that's why I did ask to bring it to the policy committee, and I think that, like I said, the workarounds that I gave you, I thought they are, like, that you guys can function, you guys can still function. But I think we do need to break to the policy committees to then, um, you know, script it in stone, so it's, you know.
So as of right now, these parents that are going to be volunteering, like, in the next month, we need to get the TV test, the show to the school that they want. Is that what you said?
And then policies.
So if they don't have that, they are not coming to school volunteering.
Was that for all of them, or was that for the, because there's two different classes? I, I looked through, I can find the TV. It's actually a policy. The mandated reporter, mandatory reporter, I know that one was only for one group of volunteers.
Yep.
The other districts have like that TV test requirement, or one or two.
No, they didn't. They didn't, yes. They know we have parents, they don't want to call them out, but, you know, because obviously all the parents here are perfect parents, but all the other school districts are all the same guidelines.
She needs to say they have these guidelines in place, not necessarily they're following them. So we'll be looking at that for the next policy meeting. Any other old business? Does anybody have any new business? That brings us back to our closing public comment. Again, three minutes, and please state your name, township, or borough.
Travis Culver, Salem Township. I have a question for you about the public comment. I was always told that only people from within the district were allowed to make public comments. Is that true?
So, uh, the only exception to that is. I read it earlier, I just need to find it again. So any, anyone representing a, a group in the community or school district? So I believe Mr. Herring falls in, under that.
So any group can come and speak on behalf and just, just say that they have people within this community?
Well, if you have members of your group, I mean, if you're a multi-county group or whatever, and you have members in the group, members of your, your group that live in the school district and the community, I would think that would, just go ahead.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Hi, Christina Bursel Culver, Salem Township again, sorry. Um, first, just to clarify, yes, there was an injunction in, by a Kansas, um, judge, which, um, it's good to know we have Moms for Liberty in Barwick now, but anyway, the Kansas decision does not have any effect whatsoever on state laws. The Pennsylvania Humans Relation Act and its regulations lawfully prohibit discrimination in schools based on gender identity and expression and sexual orientation, and all public schools, including charter, remain liable under those provisions to prevent discriminations against LGBTQ students, so we still have to worry about them. Um, also, I talked to a few LGBTQ kids from our district, um, who were not, did not want to come and speak, um, but I asked them, um, about pride flags. They said at least one of their teachers has a flag in their classroom. They said at least one of their teachers has a flag in their classroom. How did that make them feel? Happy, relieved, glad that at least one teacher supported who they are. She won't be mean to me for being gay. I feel safe and accepted. I'm going to like this class. She is slay, which is the ultimate compliment, I am told. Then I asked, what if a policy is passed that pride flags need to be taken down? I'd be mad, that's very rude. I would feel unsafe and not understand why anyone would want to take them away. Why don't they want us to feel accepted and supported? I would be devastated. It would make the bullies think they can bully us for being gay. I thought America stood for freedom. We should not be passing policies to cause our LGBTQ kids more harm. We should be passing policies to make them feel more included, respected, and supported. LGBTQ kids are four times as likely to attempt suicide. And one attempt is made every forty-five seconds. Some people will say that I want to indoctrinate kids to become gay or trans. No, I want to ensure that our queer children become queer adults, period. So please, change course and show our kids that we are that inclusive district. I was assured that we are, but clearly we are not. Otherwise, be prepared, because there are many of us who are ready to stand up and fight to protect our kids. Their lives literally depend on it. Thank you.
Hi, shifting gears a little bit, I'm Loriann Beischlein. I am in Briar Creek Township, my husband Ryan. Um, I'd like to talk for a minute about Policy 115. That's your career and technical education program, and some requests that I have made to certain members of the board that have not been answered yet, so I want to put those on record, please. So our daughter Amelia attends Central Columbia School District in the CTE program, that's chapter thirty-three, thirty-nine. Um, in July, we contacted some of you to request an appeal of the decision that was made to prohibit Amelia from playing sports, being in any type of athletic roster at the school where she attends classes. In your Policy 115, that is prohibited. On August twelfth, we were notified that that provision of Policy 115 is intended to eliminate concerns about students enrolling in out, in out-of-district programs primarily for athletic purposes, um, and that exceptions are not made on an individual basis. Please note that Amelia has never attended class in the Burwick School District. Um, on August twenty-second, we asked for an in-person meeting with any of you to discuss this matter. I'd like to know the process for a formal appeal. Uh, we also requested to, for you to confirm for us that there has never been an exception made on an individual basis to any board policy. We also asked that to direct me to the minutes of these board meetings where these, this particular provisions of this policy revision between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two were discussed by this group. Um, we've not received a response or any, um, feedback on any of those asks. So according to the PA Department of Education, school districts are not to limit the attendance of students that are eligible for admissions and admission into a CTE program. So we believe that the Burwick area school district is indeed limiting her attendance and other CTE students' attendance by placing unreasonable restrictions on their ability to fully engage in the high school experience. So by denying them, all the students, any CTE program student, the opportunity to engage in sports in a district where they attend classes, you are hindering students' overall growth, success, and potential. We don't believe that the restrictions that you have in place in Policy 115 reflect the intent or the spirit of the Department of Education's CTE program guidelines. And we will continue to escalate this issue as advocates not only for Amelia, but for all CTE students whose high school experiences are being, um, detrimentally impacted by the provisions of this particular policy, and it would be elements C and F. As educators and leaders within our community, we implore you to take another look at this policy and the fact that you're placing significant limitations on overall student success. Um, you should consider the logistic challenges resulting from those provisions of Policy 115, but especially the detrimental impact to our students' mental health.
Leah Zulinski-Neskepek. For the last two years, we as parents were promised a transition that would have the best interest of students in mind. The five of you who voted in favor of this consolidation have not ensured any of these promises were kept. We were told that kindergarten classes were projected to be around sixteen students each. They are all over twenty. We were told that this consolidation would create a plethora of additional resources in the way of staff. There are not nearly enough aides in East Burwick to accommodate some of the issues teachers are facing. You have placed impossible tasks on your administrators to try and accommodate these students. We were told that our students wouldn't have to worry about going to a new building because they would still see all of their friends. We as parents spent the entire summer promising our kids basic things like recess with their friends, getting them excited about this transition. A few days into school, we realized this isn't a possibility because this building cannot accommodate this number of students in the most basic ways. You have one first grade class that goes to recess and lunch with kindergarten. Both the Neskepek and Salem students in that class do not get to see their friends they made last year, and they are not able to interact with their peers their own age outside of their single class. The same is true of some of the third grade classes. I would encourage you to speak to the families of the students this directly impacts. You as a district, continue to get dismal reports regarding test scores and student engagement. Do not, as school directors, sit here and wonder why. It's because you're not providing the supports that are being directly requested by those working in these buildings. The same supports you promised would be a plenty and create an equitable learning environment. You aren't spending your time engaging your teachers and administrators and gathering information that would improve the educational outcomes of students because you're too busy coming up with policies that create division within the community to push your own personal agendas. You claimed you wanted to get back to the basics of education and create a better climate for this district. It's time to start acting like it.
Well, I'll start with, I don't think you guys have shown any personal agendas here at all. When I see, I go to school meetings all across the east, northeast PA. We've been out to western PA, down by Philadelphia, and these are common sense policies, so I certainly agree with that statement. There was a, just on the policies alone, I just, I want to say, because again, we go and we communicate with a lot of different school boards. There was a judgment in twenty-twenty-two after COVID lockdown, and some parents went and sued and said, you as a school board can't lock me down, you can't mask my shirt, and so on and so forth. As we all know, that's a very, very polarizing time in our country. Well, a judge on western Pennsylvania, in the case Prozan v. Mill Creek, ruled, and this has consistently been held by all the appellate courts in Pennsylvania, that a, um, a court, that any appellate court is not a super school board. What does that mean? We're a common law. The power is centralized, it's local. That means if somebody says the school board did something wrong, they made a policy that I don't like, and I'm going to sue them, the courts have held consistently that the legislature that's suing the judicial branch is not a super school board. You own that control. You guys have the power to make your policies. I would encourage you, as you're going through the language here, don't get caught up on all the nuances here. If you want that policy to be in place, put it in place. It's going to get challenged, it's going to get challenged by one of the two sides, right? And you have a solicitor for that. So I don't want to get caught up too much on that. You guys have the power to create the policies. Um, again, back to the empathy, and somehow we've come, we've come here because I believe in dignity and respect for my daughter, and I want her to be able to grow up and play sports against other females. I want her to be in her facilities with other females. Somehow it makes me all the names in the book. But when we push too far on this political ideology that some gentleman over here talks about, look it, look no further than Central Bucks West. They pushed during the election cycle all kinds of stuff against the school board, I'm not going to get into politics. But when the new president was sworn in, she was sworn in on pornographic books that depict a sexual act to a school board. So when we give an inch and we start pandering to all of this ideology, very far-left ideology, that happens. That can come to Burwick. That can come to Kinsley area, that can come to Wyandotte area, that's why we go around, we make sure we're watching this stuff. Finally, I'll address the, uh, Title IX issue. Title IX, as we all know, is a federal law. So a federal injunction stops Title IX. You want to talk about PHRC and the PHRA Act? That's an administrative regulation. Somehow, some way, our legislators allowed for the administrative change of the world's sex to include gender identity. That is very challengeable in court, we actually are probably going to pursue that because that wasn't changed by a legislative authority, it wasn't changed by law. It was an administrative change. If we're talking scrutiny in court, it's much lower. Title IX is federal, it's not what we call.
I probably want to sit up, except I'm getting a little tired, and I'm going to put it out. You guys went, and when you were running for school board, a bunch of you brought up about culture. And I would say probably every time you answered, there was the word changing culture in this. Culture needs to come from the top. That's you guys. And I've sat here through, I don't know, about two years of some people trying to attack certain administrators and things like that, and we'll stop with who that is because I'm not going to name call there. But I'm just saying, the culture needs to come from you guys. And I agree, it's common sense, and that's about it. These policies that are you're going, I agree with a bunch of it, but you don't have to go into all the different ends. And why are you going to just turn around and say, just go ahead and pass that policy? Make sure, again, it's stuff that you can, but the culture has to change here, and you need to change it as the board. Because your staff does not need to have to worry that every time they're trying to make a decision, they don't need to say, uh-oh, how is the board going to react to me by making this decision? They need to say, this is the decision I think is right now, and go for it. As soon as they hesitate, that's when issues come. But they also have to know, and you have an administrator who did a great job, there was a mistake, caught it like this, and it was over and done with. That person should be congratulated. I did it personally. I hope you did. But you as the board has to change that where you're supporting your own employees, not where they're worried about what is going on and how it's going to be reacted by the school. Be supportive. Decide that you're going to change your culture, so this whole district changes their culture. It is common sense. A lot of it, and a lot of the policies need to just say, this is common sense. If it's happening that we are spending hours here because the situation is occurring in Burwick, then you need a policy. If it's not occurring, let's just have common sense. And again, change your culture, start thinking as a team, not a five-four vote all the time. I like the conversation that went on today. It seemed very productive. I hope it stays that way, but please, change your culture so your employees feel supported. My two cents.
Hi, Tara Mangan, I, I don't, I, I think it's probably worth taking the risk of overstating how important this stuff is. And I, I'm afraid from, from an educator standpoint myself, it sounds like maybe we're on the brink of over-regulating ourselves into some problems. Um, and I think that as a person who also got a ride from a teacher to school when I was younger, inside of a car with a seatbelt on, it's important to kind of think about the way that these things are actually happening in real life. The actual eventualities of what it is that y'all are trying to kind of put into, um, in, into, I, I guess, proposing to put into practice in these buildings. Um, that person was my neighbor, so yes, she was a teacher, she was also my neighbor, and she knew my parents, right? And we can't get so specific in these things that we're infantilizing our faculty, frankly. Right, so the more you treat people like they can't make good choices, the more folks start not making great choices, right, or feeling untrusted. And some of this is super bad news on the long term. So I really, really, I, I, I'll say, I'll say it again, even though it's redundant, Nancy just said these things. This is super important work, and you have to be really intentional and really thoughtful about what the wording is going to be, okay? So I think the intentions are good, but be very careful not to invent boogeymen where they don't even exist, right? And also, it's feeling a lot like this is coming from folks who maybe haven't worked in classrooms or in helping fields at all. So it's probably worth consulting some folks, some people who work with people. And really, really, I think nuance is important in some of this stuff, right? Because I think we all live very complicated lives in complicated systems. So I wish it were as black and white as a lot of people would like to make this, but it's not. So maybe look outside too, like this circle, when getting this stuff written down, before you bring it to the table again.
Anybody else?
I just have a question about the handbook. I know that Jen talked about it a little bit, um, but in the handbook itself, there are two examples, and I appreciate that you provide examples for both. One is a physician volunteer and one is a guest volunteer. However, in there, neither one of them have examples such as the Christmas store, as you mentioned earlier. Um, so where would that fall? Uh, Field Day is another one, where would that fall? These are events that take place in the school, but, or the teachers are involved as well. So I get that the possibility of a student being alone, maybe with a teacher, is there, but where do you draw the line? And as Jen said, we now have a hundred and fifty-some kids that have moved over, so our count at East Burwick is five hundred and fifty-five. And you want all of these parents to get all of those clearances and a TV test, which none of us have ever heard of before. Who's mandating this and who's, who's keeping track of it? I've been on the parent group for many years, ev, every year since my older daughter was in school, and now that my younger daughter is now in school, never once did I hand in a TV test. I have no problem with clearances, I fully support clearances, but who's going to, who's going to mandate this and who's going to keep track of it? Like I said, I've never turned in one. So you said it's been a policy for how many years? Who's keeping track of it? So basically, that's my question of that, and can you give us some clarification as to those event lists I mentioned? More importantly, a fall festival that we have planned for our East Burick kids, the end of October, which has a very, very tight timeline to get parents. Now is not the time to turn parent volunteers away. We need them more than ever with that amount of students. Thank you.